Meredith. Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I would like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to quickly mention that Selectman Serino is on vacation, but he will be here for the next meeting. I also wanted to welcome our Town Manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, and our Clerk Meredith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home, tonight, oh, I also want to quickly mention that this meeting and all of our public meetings are being recorded. We do have a presentation of a citation tonight to the Continental Restaurant after seventy-two years of service to the community of Saugus. I do not see representatives of the Continental in the audience. Is there somebody in the audience this evening?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion that we just put that on the table to see if they show up in a little while.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next, under correspondence, we have an SCTV request for capital to purchase equipment, and I do see Anthony Michella and Michelle Fox, our Executive Director, as well as some of the SCTV Board of Directors here this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing, night?
Good. How are you?
Very good.
Michelle Fox, Executive Director of Saugus TV, thirty Arlington Road, Luburn.
Anthony Michella, Associate Director, One Flynn Street Court, Danvers.
So Anthony called me about a week and a half ago when we were talking about some capital needs. Would you like to tell the Board exactly what it is that you're looking for this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, one of the things when we did the original build-out of the new station here, we were in the process of trying to find some sort of a storage solution, both for archives and any new production stuff that we do over the years. And one of the things that we had to do when the construction went a little over budget was we had to trim down some of the things that we wanted to implement. This was one of the things that we wanted to implement. It's actually, in the years that have passed, they've gotten a lot more in-depth with what these systems can do. But basically, what it is, is it's a, it's an archive system of hard drives that we can network so that we all can use the same drives at the same time. Basically, now the situation that we run into between both finding the material on the drives that we need and, you know, limiting ourselves to one person, one computer per drive has been pretty cumbersome. This way, it gives us a chance to work on things collaboratively, plus be able to access the stuff anywhere in the studio, and it just makes everything a lot easier. And like I said, this was something that we had envisioned originally and never got a chance to really dive into.
And it's my understanding that you would like to take these funds, you have some, a balance left over in your budget.
Correct. Yeah, this is still in our operational fund. This wouldn't be coming from our, our PEG account at all. We wouldn't need any new appropriations at this point.
But I believe you have a small balance in your capital account as well?
Correct, yes.
So how much? No.
So.
So the total amount, if I'm looking at this key code, Anthony?
Correct.
That's the, what we're looking at, correct?
Yes.
And so the total, there's a subtotal here. I do see a discount. They're still going to honor the discount?
Correct, yes. I was able to get them. They've been pretty good at working with me on this, so.
So it's the total of the forty-six thousand, seven twenty-two ninety-four, and then there's some professional services of four thousand, two ninety-one?
Yeah. And then, and what we also have is we have it broken down into a three-payment system where we give half for the order, half upon their receipt of the, of the equipment, and then we pay the last payment after it's all been set up and functional.
And so out of the fifty thousand, thirteen ninety-four, how much of that will be coming out of your capital account and how much will be coming out of their?
So what we have left, we have more than enough in our current capital account, operations account, rather, so we wouldn't, it has more than enough in there to cover, so.
And how much is in your capital account?
I believe right now, and this is, this may have changed because we do have another deposit coming in this month, but it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand right now. It was in this today. So it's probably over, it's just over two hundred thousand now, left over.
Yeah, because January, you had a seventy-three thousand.
Correct, it just came in.
So you had one thirty-four plus seventy-three?
Yep.
Selectman Chicalini, do you have questions?
No, Madam Chair, just the total I'm coming up with is fifty-one thousand, thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Yeah, I think that might be the total after all taxes and installations, perhaps?
Yeah. So this bid, this key code is the company that you've done business with in the past?
Correct, yes. They're the ones, they, it used to be Access AV.
Right.
And then they kind of merged with a few other companies.
So they're the ones that fitted up the equipment originally that's in the studio?
Correct, yep.
Do board members have any questions?
Hello, Ms. Sett.
Thanks.
Selectman Cogliano?
No questions.
Okay. With that said, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation out of the operating funds for SCTV for the bid quote, two-three-seven-seven-three-six, version two, for a total of fifty-one thousand, thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents, as mentioned from Mr. Michella. The total in the account, in the operating account, is more than significant enough to cover this. They won't have to take any funds out of the capital account.
And now just seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're already standing up there, so we'll talk about the next item under correspondence, which is the information and timeline regarding the hiring of the SCTV Director and Associate Director. You did give us some information. Did you want to talk a little bit about what you presented?
Yeah. So I just gave you kind of the timeline of the events leading up to today. And it shows from the time that we met back in April. I was not at that meeting. I was on maternity leave at that time. But do we have any questions particular about any of that?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
Through you. So on the spreadsheet that's reflected, I guess my only question is, is the, which scenario is the scenario that actually was adopted?
It would be the 1A.
1A was adopted?
Yes.
And where was the administrative assistant, Maureen's position in 1A?
Part-time administrative assistant slash videographer, under that one. It's all the way, it's the second to the last one.
So her position is the videographer?
It's a part-time assistant admin, as well as someone who, we wanted someone who would be able to pick up a camera. That's why they would go up to like twenty-nine hours sometimes. Just someone who would, you know, we could utilize to help us with the in-house and events and stuff, which she's also, she's done a great job on.
The total salaries that are in Scenario 1A still align with what was in the budget in total?
Yep.
I, I read through the timeline. I read through the minutes. I mean, as long as it's properly documented now, the way it is, I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure that we had it here as a reference point for our packets and to have on file at the Selectmen's Office so that we show that we had ample time to review the materials and make sure we could ask questions. So I appreciate you putting this, putting this together.
Yeah, we made it a priority when you mentioned that. We knew it was an important thing, so we wanted to get it done as soon as possible.
I, I appreciate it. And your resume is quite extensive and impressive, so.
Fine, or?
Yeah, yours, I saw, yours in here. I saw Anthony's in here, but yours had, you know, a lot of detail, and I was, you know, I didn't realize how much you had, how much you had done.
Yeah. Some people think I'm way younger than I actually am, so.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
I don't have that problem. So that's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any additional questions? All right. Well, I don't think that we need to take a vote at this point, but I do appreciate you coming. We need to do our due diligence, as well as you need to do yours, so as long as we're both on the same wavelength, that's all that really matters. So thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming and giving us this information tonight.
Thank you for.
And thank you for your board members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year department operating budget that we got from Wendy Hatch. So I don't know whether the board members would like to vote for that this evening and keep it flat from the year before, or if we'd like to put it on the January twenty-first meeting so that we could discuss it and maybe make changes if necessary.
Selectman Serino will be here.
That is correct.
Yeah.
So we're going to, we'll put this on for a vote, Meredith, for our next meeting. The next item on the agenda is we had a surrender of Section twelve alcoholic beverage license from Ria Hospitality, Inc., and they were doing businesses Longhorn Steakhouse, number five-five-nine-five, thirteen twenty-five Broadway, number one in Saugus. And it was strongly recommended that we take a vote, even though we received the letter, that we take a vote as a board to accept them rescinding their license and giving it back to the town. So would somebody like to make?
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And it's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our first citizens' comments of the evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Mark Sacco, sixteen Westford Street.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, and fellow residents. Before I begin Mark's remarks, I'd like to provide copies of a FOIA document obtained from the Town Manager's Office, and I ask that these be entered into the record. If I may pass, pass this along?
Yes.
I wanted to begin by acknowledging the recent confirmation that the petition to protect and preserve Saugus playgrounds will be included on the January twenty-first meeting agenda. While I appreciate this update, I feel it's important to highlight that the origination of this petition was submitted over this past summer, and after weeks of persistent follow-up, we are just now receiving confirmation that it will be discussed.
May I interrupt you for just one second, if you don't mind? Can I, would you mind, just one second? First of all, the board, just, just so that we're clear, the Board of Selectmen, we're not parks and playgrounds, and you've been coming to, not just you, but a few residents have been coming to our meetings. We've allowed everyone to speak. I know you've had a meeting with the Town Manager. We had a public meeting. You are, the reason why it was not put on an agenda is because it was my understanding back in December that you were working with Town Council on making this petition into an article. And once it's made into an article, that's when we vote to insert it into the town meeting warrant. So I just want to be clear that we have no issue. It's not even a discussion point. If you have an article that comes before the board administratively, we don't, we don't even discuss it. We just, we will vote it out of respect for all residents. We vote their article into the town meeting warrant, and it's up to town meeting to decide whether they move forward with it or not. So if you have an article for us to insert, we're more than happy to insert it into the next town meeting warrant.
Okay, that's fair. And I'm going to finish what I have to say here, but.
Absolutely. I just, I felt it was important to mention that.
My issue is this, Madam Chairman, is this has been a long process, so if you could let me finish. I understand there are processes, but from my understanding is the Board of Selectmen have the responsibility to work through these issues with the residents. And so I'm just going to finish what I have to say here. This delay and lack of communication has raised significant concerns about this process. The petition represents the voices of residents who want to ensure transparency and accountability in how decisions about public spaces like Stalker Playground are made. However, the lack of communication and recognition until now has been troubling. It is disheartening to witness delays and uncertainties surrounding a matter so critical to our community. I'd also like to share a perspective of Kim Calla, a resident of Stalker Street, who has spoken on behalf of the abutters and residents of Stalker and Riverside Streets in her testimony. And she shared the following, and I quote, "Had the town been transparent with their plans and actually notified butters, abutters, and nearby residents, they would have found a majority who were unaware of a dog park and a majority who oppose it. I took this time in the summer to collect signatures and gather public opinion. Among the abutters, eighteen opposed and only two did not, one being a dog owner who would never use the dog park and other changing their positions upon realizing it would impact wildlife." She also outlines major concerns shared by residents, including excess traffic, safety of their children, loss of wildlife, fear of dogs, excess barking, contamination and disease. Kim concluded her testimony with a powerful statement, and I'll quote, "You should use this as an example. We come together as a community. It's time the town of Saugus does the same." Her words encapsulate the broader concerns of residents and emphasize why preserving Stalker Playground is not just about protecting a piece of land, but about maintaining the values of community and transparency. This entire process underscores why this petition is necessary. The assurance letter and design documents for the dog park were submitted to the Stanton Foundation over a year before a public forum was held. This timeline raises serious questions about the administration's commitment to transparency and community input. Additionally, it has been openly acknowledged that abutters, those most directly impacted, were not properly notified during the planning phase. These actions, or lack thereof, have left many residents feeling excluded and unheard. I hope that moving forward, this board will commit to addressing these issues and ensure that residents' voices are genuinely considered. The confirmation of the January twenty-first agenda date is a step in the right direction, but I urge you to treat this petition with the seriousness it deserves. This is not just about preserving one playground. It is about restoring faith in the government of our town and ensuring the future decisions are made with transparency, accountability, and respect for the residents. And before I conclude, I'd like to ask one question. Have you seen the parking situation when Little League is in session? The lot is completely chalked with parents' vehicles. Where would a dog park visitors park? This is just one of many logistical concerns that further underscores why the community must be involved in these decisions from the start. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini?
I just want to add to your comments, which I think were spot-on. I think the part that's getting overlooked here is the fact that when the committee was meeting, it was during the pandemic, and we were forced to meet remotely. All of our meetings were posted publicly. All of our meetings were documented, and we did invite all of the precinct town meeting members, which many attended several of the, several of the, the meetings that we held. I think it's important to note that this letter of interest to Stanton was because the manager was responding to a request that was time-sensitive, so they had to have something to say that it was a viable location in order to secure, to potentially secure the grant. It was not etched in stone that it was going to happen at this time. When the manager, when we have a public meeting on a committee and we're on Zoom, we had, several of the Zooms had a lot of people on them that weren't on the committee. We don't know if it's residents or not residents, but it was, they were put up on the website. They were posted, public meetings. So I just take a little bit of pause when we hear that these were not, this was kind of done behind closed doors. We didn't have a choice. The government dictated when we could have these meetings and how we can have these meetings, and these meetings were held virtually for a reason. And nothing, even when this letter was crafted in January of twenty-three, that was only to seek interest to Stanton Foundation, and the committee at that point had decided that that location met the criteria for it. And there's a lot out there about the potential sites associated with the schools that are offline. Unfortunately, for the Stanton Foundation, there's a requirement that it has to be available in perpetuity for the location that you choose. If you read their grant agreement, that's a very specific requirement. And right now, with the purpose of those schools being unknown, there's no way to determine if we took a section of that property and made it a dog park, if that's a viable, it's not a perpetual solution because they have not been repurposed. So there's a lot of talk about why can't we use one of the offline schools? The offline schools were just turned over to the town last year, and they have not gone through the process of being repurposed yet, which would be a completely different exercise. So I just wanted to make those comments. It's not a matter of who's right or wrong, but I don't think that this letter that was shared with the board from the Town Manager to the Stanton Foundation is indicative of any final decision being made. It's just saying that this six-point-three-five acre site is owned by the town, and it could be the appropriate location for a dog park. And that's how I read that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I am sorry that the previous speaker left and did not hear what you had to say because I thought your words were very important. Hi, good evening. Name and address, please.
Julie Mills, twelve Columbus Ave. I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing the petition from the abutters and concerned community members presented by Mark Sacco to be added to the next Selectmen's meeting. It's nice to hear and nice to see that these concerns will be heard and considered through proper channels and not, not the ridiculous and vulgar, vulgar comments being spewed on several community Facebook groups. I'm sure you're all aware of those. I'm glad that my elected officials have chosen to take this first step forward and have taken the high road. This needs to be opened up to the public. You know, off the cuff, as far as Zoom meetings, I didn't go to any Zoom meetings. I was struggling with family members and COVID, and honestly, Zoom meetings about a dog park were not important during COVID to me. It's important now, and I think a lot of elderly people in this town didn't understand Zoom meetings. And I think parents with kids were more concerned about helping their kids with schooling through meetings. So it might not have been fortuitous to have a meeting during a Zoom and not pursue it further. But this is a good first step. I'd like to, it's, it's nice to see that this will be following proper channels and not on social media. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, Mr. Vecchione?
I didn't want to begin my twenty-twenty-five in Town Hall. Stayed away from most of the year. And I wish, I do wish the first speaker was here to, to listen to, you know, what Mr. Chicalini have to say because it was very important. And I, as a town meeting member myself, for four years, it certainly is a frustrating process, but, you know, I, you live and you learn how to craft an article and collaborate with people and members of your community.
Would you do me a favor, please? We all know who you are, but for.
Oh, yeah. Joe Vecchione, thirty-one Womisett.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, you know, I know there was supposed to be some sort of a motion before the board, which I assumed was going to be inserting an article for the next town meeting, which is purely procedural, as you noted, Madam Chair. I did want to address the board as there's been a series of citizen comments in the past few months related to the dog park and corresponding behavior, which has been troubling, and I feel like it's appropriate to retort at this time. First of all, I'm increasingly troubled by the petitioner and town meeting members' rhetoric, hyperbolic claims, grandstanding and fundamental misunderstanding of the municipal process and how government functions. And of course, you know, again, as a town meeting member in the past, it is a frustrating process, takes a lot of due diligence to get things done, you know. But again, I'm not going to say I knew everything when I was town meeting, but I paid attention. I engaged my peers in government and became a sponge. I communicated. I did my due diligence before I spoke. And if I didn't know something, I educated myself. If I didn't know how to write an article, I sit with Town Council or my peers to refine that article. The problem I have with the individual that spoke previously, that he chooses the contentious and insolent approach with whoever he speaks to, as I think, you know, you've all been exposed to at this point because it's been a bunch of, you know, I don't want to say, because it can get very contentious in government, but straight-up disrespectful emails, you know, name-calling. In those emails, we've all been CC'd on those. Even Mark Volger, who calls it right down the middle, caught a stray or two in that, that process. And I think that's, you know, pretty inappropriate because, you know, these are all efforts, you know, as, as many things as we do here, it's, it's in an effort to kill a dog park. Let's call it what it is, you know. And I've certainly had my differences with almost everybody sitting up here, you know, but, and definitely when I had in disagreement with all you, you definitely knew my position on those things. But I try to keep it professional and factual. And the inability of the petitioner to do either of those things is very worrisome, especially as an elected official, as a town meeting member. From indicting the dog park with non-factual or unformed claims to intentionally misleading editorials in a deed or article language, to try and abate members of the board, including pointing at the chairwoman and saying, "Do you support the environment?", which is a ridiculous statement with your, with your track record, Madam Chair. To, claims of picking taxpayers' pockets to hyperbolic statements regarding the scope of the dog park and what it impacts, the list goes on. But it astounds me that the author of the petition would disindignously promote the values of transparency and honesty when he and a couple others in the small group have shown a complete lack of it throughout this entire process. Public spaces, they benefit the entire town, and growing up directly abutting at a parker my entire life, I appreciate that more than most. As a dad of two with a third on the way, and as a consistent user of these recreational spaces across Saugus, I support projects that expand and diversify the recreational offerings in Saugus, and I wouldn't support something that takes away from my kids. And, you know, the, the new hockey rink and the pickleball courts, which are used by all ages. I know there's claims that nobody, you know, no kids play pickleball, but I played pickleball with the petitioner as, you know, a childhood friend back in seventh grade. so I don't know where that claim's coming from. But, you know, every proposal with a butter will have opponents. That's a given in Saugus and almost every town and city. The rail trail, which, you know, that was eight years ago at this point, faced similar opposition and NIMBYism. And I don't use that word lightly, but you know, it was, it's now one of our most utilized assets in town. You know, and it faced probably more backlash. And actually, back eight years ago, I was petitioning or asking for the dog park then during those meetings as kind of accessory to that use. You know, and then it was reinvigorating 2020, and then Rick Lavoy curated a dog community of, community dog owners, 2,500 people, you know? So to say that nobody supports the dog park is just utterly ridiculous because we wouldn't have started this whole thing if there wasn't a, you know, a drive to do it. There was plenty of support from the community, and we looked at dozens of sites and did our due diligence and, you know, unfortunately, when, you know, government doesn't stop during COVID, nor should it. And we, we, we met, you know, based on the momentum that we were gaining with the dog community and unfortunately, we couldn't, excuse me, we couldn't meet in person because it was still mandated that we couldn't meet in person. But, you know, I trust feedback, you know, real valid feedback beyond simply not wanting something in their backyard will be weighed into the, whatever updated proposal of, of the dog park is. And I'm just, I'm disappointed that the dishonest and hyperbolic claims made throughout this process and the approach made by that town meeting member, it's just, it's regrettable. And, you know, I will ensure if this petition goes to town meeting, whenever it becomes a legal article, and I do hope that the petitioner continues to work with town council because it's really not your responsibility, your responsibility is to put into town meeting. You know, it's the petitioner's responsibility, you know, and collaborating with peers, which I highly recommend he does, to get a legal article, to get it onto town meeting and let town meeting talk to it. So on the 21st, I fully expect that he has a legal article and it's inserted into the next meeting and it's deliberated on in May. But, you know, I will make sure in May, you know, just to make sure that the true motives of this article are made aware, and it's far from a genuine pursuit to improve the civic discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon, Sharon Floramo, and I'm a resident of Stalker Street. It's in poor taste to put down another town meeting member.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, could you speak more into, I, I, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's in poor taste to put down another town meeting member without full acknowledgement of any Facebook post that he's referring to. He doesn't have definite information about any post that he's talking about, of who, of who posted it. And the Zoom call meetings, I 100% agree with Julie, that not everyone was notified that, that the town was calling Zoom call meetings for, for important issues such as this. And it's been agreed upon that we were not notified, it's been agreed upon in a meeting that we were never sent notices. That's the only way anybody in the three surrounding streets would have known that this was happening. I was working and I never really looked up Zoom calls during that time. So I was not, not knowledgeable of what was happening. And I didn't have a prepared speech because I was going to go over some numbers, I can right now. But with all the seniors and children under the age of 14, my figures are 34% of a population of 27,200, who would best benefit from Stalker being revitalized as an environmental and social educational park far exceeds the mere 5.9% of special interest dog owners who might or might not use a dog park. So I'd like to close with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I hope that when, whether it be one of the previous speakers or whomever comes before us on January 21st, we have no, as I mentioned earlier, our role is purely administrative. We will take an article, somebody will make a motion to insert it into the town warrant. We don't get a vote on that, that will be town meeting who will vote on that. Our job will just be to vote to insert it. So it's really not a debate on whether we insert it or we don't insert it. Administratively, we will be inserting that article on January 21st. I'm sorry, I can't hear you from there.
Madam Chair, she said that he's asking, she thinks he's asking us for our advice. That we don't, this board doesn't write articles, we don't put articles, he's already communicated with town council. Well, then he should respond to town council's email. No, he received the emails because we're all CC'd on them. Our board is CC'd on the email from town council to the town meeting member. So we, this isn't, we're getting confused, we're getting confused for the role of the Board of Selectmen to the role of town meeting. We are an administrative body when it comes to articles being inserted into a town meeting warrant. We don't discuss them, we're precluded from discussing them because they're not under our purview. We don't vote on them, we don't opine on them, we don't even say if we agree or disagree with them. We literally make a vote to say, this article, we don't even have to read the article, we say, article proposed from town meeting member precinct three will be inserted into the, into the next town meeting. And that's it. It's an administrative function only. And town council wrote that in his email. So I don't know where the confusion's coming, but if there's an issue with the, with the article, then that needs to be taken up with town council, or you have to go to the governing documents on how to write an approved bylaw amendment. And that's what the previous speaker was discussing on how he's done it in the past. It takes a lot of work. It's not, it's not just, it's not simple because you're dealing with bylaws that were crafted decades ago. So it is, it is quite involved. If, if it wasn't quite involved, we'd have people proposing bylaw changes every week. And that, and that's what makes it difficult. So, but this board, I tried to get this across, I actually sent him a private message, but he didn't respond, and I tried to let him know that this is an administrative function and it's absolutely going to get inserted into a town meeting warrant. That's an automatic. The board isn't for, against, it just, it's an administrative function. Then you go to town meeting and speak, speak at town meeting and they can, they deliberate and talk about it. So that's how the process works.
Julie, Julie Mills, again, 12 Columbus Ave. I just have a question, just clarify for me. The Board of Selectmen appoints the town manager, correct?
Yes.
Hires, yes.
Yes. So is it possible for the Board of Selectmen to require a request from the town manager, a full account of any monies coming out of discretionary funds that are, that are being directed towards this, towards the park? Can we ask for transparency? I would like to know if there's money coming out of the manager's discretionary funds. I'd kind of like to know if someone's picking my pocket, I'd like to know where my tax dollars are going.
So.
I'd just like to see accountability.
Yeah, but you have to understand, there's a pool of money that's allotted.
Oh, I know that.
The last two, two years, town meeting has allotted money. No, I'm saying to parks and playgrounds.
I, I understand that, but I would like to see an account from the town manager saying, okay, we spent X amount of dollars on Richie Williams to come in.
You could submit a FOIA request, like, like was done for that document. You could submit a FOIA request and, and request the documentation.
Yeah, because I, there was a, I think there was a survey, Richie Williams out of Boxford, it's an outside survey. Who paid for it?
Madam Chair, I think we can save a lot of time.
Yes.
The Stanton Foundation allotted a design grant, so we got $25,000 in funds that we've been using to proceed with the design and, and preliminary concept drawings.
Did you hear that?
I did. When we went before the Conservation Commission, I believe, Richard Williams Surveying Company out of Boxford, I think, was also presented to the Conservation Commission. Who hired him? I'm just asking, you know, you know, here's my pocket, pick it, but I want to know.
No, but he said that the Stanton Foundation paid the 20.
That was for the, that was for the design.
For all, all of that is paid through the grant.
In the survey work.
Yeah. So I just don't understand, I don't want to get into a debate, I think this isn't on the agenda, but the idea of like somebody's picking your pocket is sort of like, it's almost argumentative or aggressive.
Yeah, not arguing. I would just like to, if at the meeting.
Nobody's picking your pocket, so when you say that, it's sort of implies something that I don't.
I'm sorry, I offended you.
It's not respectful, I think, to the, to the board or to the town. I mean, I'm happy to talk about anything you want to talk about, but when you say that and you've said it three times and, and within a minute and a half, it's, it's, you know, it's sort of implying, I don't know if you're.
It's semantics.
No, I don't think so. I think it's argumentative.
Not really, not really. I want to know.
We're not going to debate on a word. If there's information that you need or want, you could submit a FOIA request. We do have the budgets that come out that are incredibly detailed, they give all sorts of information. But we have everything. I believe that we are, as a town, incredibly transparent when it comes to the numbers, even to listing everybody's salary for every single department. But so if there's something that you do need, please reach out and we can get you what you need, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to see any monies that have gone out to the dog park, even if it's the Stanton Foundation.
Okay, very good, we'll get that information to you.
I would like to see.
Okay.
Just make sure you file a formal request so we have it in writing.
Okay, if somebody could help me do that.
Well, the town meeting member already did it, that's how he got the document that he passed on.
Yeah, I just, I just want to know where all the money's coming from.
Yep.
That's all.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, I mean, maybe just to like give a little bit of an update, just because there's a lot of things being said, and I don't want to make this a bigger thing, but I want to be as respectful as I can based on sort of the happenings. But I did meet with the residents and town meeting members in the conference room, I don't know, back a few months ago, and I thought it was a really productive and, and I think constructive meeting, and explained to them that, you know, this is a priority for the town, there's lots of townspeople that are interested in pursuing this, and that we, it was a dog park committee that put this together, and, you know, I'm now trying to facilitate that so that we can take advantage of the grant money that's available to us, and that we were awarded an initial grant to be able to put surveys and designs and things like that together by, through grant money. I did offer, and it still remains open, anybody that can, you know, that remains professional and respectful, I offered to the residents and the abutters there that they could sit on, if they wanted to be on an advisory committee, you know, through the process. Unfortunately, I think after I had that meeting, and I think I'm sure you're all aware of it, I'm not on social media, but people sent me stuff, you know, I was basically attacked and insulted very unprofessionally on social media, and my feelings were hurt. And, you know, I'm, I'm still open to try to work with, you know, people that are, want to be part of a process and give input, and, you know, I offered to say like, you know, through the process, let's just determine what things you're concerned about so that we could try to alleviate those things and operationally or whatnot, but we were still in the process of trying to make sure that we adhere to what the, what the Stanton Foundation grant criteria was. So anyways, I just want to make sure that, that people are aware that I've invited them, I've met with them, I'm happy to continue to work with people that have input and that have concerns that we can try to alleviate, you know, like we do with everything. We had the rail trail, we had Anna Parker, we've had the tennis courts, and we make accommodations and different things to try to alleviate those things. And I think you, as the board and myself, we're completely open to doing that. And, you know, in a respectful manner, we want to obviously deal with any concerns and any issues, and if at the end of the day it doesn't work out, we can lock the gates and nobody can use it. You know, if, if it creates a quality of life issue that's negative. But I just wanted to make sure that that's, everybody's aware of that because it is an open process. And I think part of, one of the speakers talked about other uses for the park. I mean, he was talking about percentages, I explained that at the meeting and I explained it to thing, and I think we've talked offline. This is just one aspect of the park. In other words, we want to enhance the entire park and come up with ideas, and if people have ideas, especially abutters and residents, of other uses, like with playground equipment or other uses that we could do environmentally that would be great and, and are appropriate there, we're more than happy to add that as part of, you know, a process or a phase to, to make the park so it's more enjoyable and usable by the residents, something that I think we all agree has been kind of, you know, depleted and deployed and almost abandoned. And I think we've been doing a good job of trying to do that, and I think through any change or anything that we do is always an impact. And part of that, any change, even if it's positive, can be stressful for everybody. So, you know, I'm open to that, I think we're all open to trying to figure that out. I think we talked about it, one of the public meetings, about making sure we do everything correctly, if, if in fact we continue to move forward. And part of that process is the conservation, to make sure that we adhere to all the environmental laws and DEP and conservation. So that's something that would be coming up as they, I think one of the speakers talked about this month, so they'll, people will get noticed and it'll be, and hopefully the board can put that out online so that people that want to come and speak and listen about that can do that. So, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the, sort of the process here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the public hearing that we also had with all of the residents and everyone had an opportunity to speak, as well as everybody having an opportunity to speak at every one of our citizens' comments. So thank you very much. So with that said, town manager's report.
Just a couple of things, I think we haven't met for a little bit, I think we, but I just want to thank everybody that was involved. We had a great tree lighting event with the holiday lights. There's many people that are involved in putting that together, and I just want to say thank you to all of them, the town employees and volunteers and, and everybody. So I thought it was very successful, the weather was cold, but I thought it was, we had a really good turnout for that. You know, we had the, the horse and, and sleigh rides, we had the petting zoo, we had the trackless train, we had the bouncy house, all the hot chocolate and cider, really a good time, and it brought out a lot of families. And it's interesting, we've been doing such an enhanced tree lighting from years ago that we've been doing it so long now that I met a bunch of people that have kids now and said that they were coming there as kids, and now they're bringing their kids there that are three, four, five years old. So that, that's a good feeling, and I think that it's a wonderful thing to have the board support these type of community events, and it just makes everybody happy. And I just want to thank everybody because it takes, you know, a village to make this happen and put this together. So thank you to the board and to everybody involved. Also, we did the menorah lighting for Hanukkah, that was fantastic. We got a new, a new menorah, so that was excellent, and we've now got that in storage for next year, so we'll be ready for next year. Interesting enough, and I didn't know this, but I learned this, I think in the year 2030 something, they'll have, the, the Hanukkah will be twice in one year and won't be in another year. So that's why all the dates change and stuff, but I found that interesting that they would have it in, twice in one year and then one year they wouldn't have it. So as the dates, as we saw this year, it coincided with Christmas Day was the first day of the lighting. So, but again, thank everyone involved with that, especially Jeannie in my office and other people trying to put that together. Also, the parade, the Holiday Santa Parade, that was a big success, and a lot of people, same thing involved in that, and people come from all over, the, the family members that have moved out of town or friends and family that live out of town come to Saugus and they look forward to that event. And I want to thank the people involved in that and the organizers and everybody that puts the time into that. So thank you. Also, just a big announcement, just a reminder, this week and la, and next week is the, anybody that has a Christmas tree that they're trying to get rid of, you put that out in front on your trash day and we'll pick that up for them. So that's the, they do it the, I think, three weeks, it's always three weeks after Christmas, the three weeks. And so. the three weeks, and so we have this week left and next week. So anybody who has a Christmas tree that wants the town to pick it up, the reliable will pick that up, just put it out with your trash day. So hopefully everybody will be aware of that. Also, another announcement is we do have some overnight sewer work scheduled on Main Street, and that's on Thursday, January 9th. So just to be aware, there might be some traffic delays or some things bordering. The other thing is just aware, you talked about it tonight, the budget season's starting, so we're going to start getting into the grind of things, but we have meetings and all that set up with all the different departments and personnel, so we'll be heavy into that soon. And also, just an update on the MBTA Communities Law. I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but the SJC Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts ruled, we saw a lot of municipalities were waiting for that, that the law is constitutional. However, the state guidelines for implementing the law are not enforceable. So the, right now, everything's on hold, developers and everybody will have to wait until the state is, it looks like they've been told they have to go back to the drawing board and go through a certain type of process to put those guidelines and make them effective. So we'll, I've been in touch with our legal counsel and we're ready with, you know, sort of, we're in a draft form, but ready to kind of roll that out and have a special on that. But we had talked about this, I think, offline previously last month. We will look at that, but he basically advised us to kind of hold tight and see what they're going to go and what they're going to do before we do anything because the guidelines could actually change through that process and we might have to tweak what we have for a draft bylaw to bring us into compliance. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions to the town manager?
Selectman Riley.
To the town manager, excuse me, you mentioned the sewer work, and today we received an email regarding a public advisory. Was the first time we got an email saying what was happening.
Okay, so, yeah, 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 so we can talk about that a little bit, yeah, yeah.
All right, because I was just.
So I'm interested, so this is, so this is interesting because what, you know, and we've talked about this because Chris, your husband, mentioned this, and we've been working on this and trying different things, so we're looking at all different options of trying to get as much information out to people, whether it's a paid service or whatever, pushing information out so that we get more people engaged as possible through social media, the cable, videos, whatever we could do. We actually had a meeting today about actually enhancing the website. So one of the things that we did and why you're getting an email, which we didn't know if it would work, people that have signed up for announcements, we didn't really know how to operate or use the system, but we added a box on there for news updates, and we weren't sure if, like, if you already signed up for that, would that box actually, without you signing up for it at the time, would you get that email? So the only issue with the website now is that it doesn't allow for text SMS sending. So we had a meeting today with the website company, so it looks like we're going to have to, and it'll probably be over the next six months, we're going to get a proposal, but we're going to update the website into a new type of format, which a lot of communities are going to that now, and that that would give you the ability to have email like you're getting, which this allows it in this system, but would also allow you to get the sign-up for text messaging announcements. So, and then you can put different categories in there, you could have agendas and all these things that'll be all enhanced, so we're pretty excited about that. This will be a process to, because you have to basically rebuild a website on a different format that's more advanced and where it looks better, has a lot more stuff where it enhances videos and all kinds of different things, but it has all these different subscription things that are right in the website so that we would just post once and it would go to all these different things rather than have to have piecemeal systems. So we're trying to do that, but anybody that wants to sign up, you can go on the website and go down to subscribe, and then you can put in your email, so you'd get at least emails for now, but we're trying to figure out, is there a way in the short term to get SMSs? If not, we can do it through the website, which is probably, you know, start to finish of getting, waiting for a proposal now would be, you know, five to six months to get that up and running within a whole new website system. So it's pretty good, like, so that's interesting you got it, because we weren't sure if you added a box, because you didn't, when you signed up, that box wasn't there. So initially, how would that work? And that was the whole questions we're asking, would we have to go back to the people that are already signed up for subscriptions? Would they have to ask, like, would they have to go back and then check the box again? So that's interesting you got it, so I'm like, that's exciting.
Well, now you know.
Yeah, so I'm learning a lot about all that good stuff. So we're moving towards that thing, and the same thing, we're trying and looking at different, every different way that we can get more information out to the residents, because I don't really, it's a funny thing about it, statistically, I don't think a lot of people use the website, believe it or not, or use websites, so it's a lot of this, maybe like if you get linked and then you get drawn to the website to a specific thing, and a lot of it has to do with, I think, people getting stuff, and then the format, like the new system, they're telling us, the new website would be like user-friendly for the phone on a cell phone and whether you're on a tablet, and it has different ways of knowing what you're signing up on or when you're opening it, so that it's much easier to read and it formats that way, whereas the website we have now doesn't do that. So, good stuff.
Well, the whole board, we, you know, we stressed on the communication and you've barely done a lot to get it to the people, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, we're really, you know, it's obviously, I think, the good thing is you guys supported it, is bringing somebody on that has some experience, and then we have other people that we're reaching out to that, all this stuff has such specialties to it, like the website is a specialty, right? And then there's, you know, the other things, the video is someone else, and so we're trying to put different things, and, you know, while we're doing day-to-day stuff and handling things, we're trying to implement new things and have short-term plans, long-term plans, but it's exciting that you got the, got that email, so that's good. So sign up and subscribe because I think we can carry that over as we enhance it.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Just a comment to add to that, too. Now that you have access to people in the database, the other thing you could do is share your town manager Instagram account in those emails so they can, they know to sign up for it, because right now there's, I don't know, 400 or 500 people that have, that are on it.
Yeah.
But if we have 2,000 people or 3,000 people in our database or more, let them know that it's out there for people because it's not like it just pops up.
Yeah, we're trying to figure all that out, so that, like, and the whole thing, too, is like, hopefully we get to a point where we just post one thing saying that we're having a street sewer work done.
And it goes to all.
And it goes to every single thing, and it's one posting. So, you know what I mean? And that's what we're trying to coordinate, so, and having that other website, it'll have everything on it, because the website will actually incorporate the see, click, and fix and everything all on one, on the website itself and through our whole system database. But the system we have now, you only can do email, you can't sign up for a thing, and we were trying to push back on them, thinking, are they just trying to upsell us? And, you know, we don't, and we can't have that feature, but it sounds like everybody's going to this, I guess it's called central or whatever for the website, but same company, but they have another, more platforms. And then they can have agendas, you can actually do the permitting, there's a whole slew of things that we're going to move into, and you need expertise to do that, and we're happy to have some. And then, you know, we're using other people to help educate us and get us to that next step, I think, with the communication. So thank you.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you. It's now time for the approval of the minutes. Our first set of minutes should be approved is November 7th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
And the chair seconds, I do have one update that I'd like to make. Meredith, if I could, under open session, when you talk about both motions were voted on and passed, could you put those were roll call votes? No, that's okay, I know the acoustics. Under open session, can you put at the end of that paragraph, the roll call votes? Thank you. So all those in favor of Selectman Cardliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have the minutes stated November 19th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
And that is seconded by the chair. I do have, can you hear me? I have one correction on page two. First paragraph, the third line up, where it says, "To that position, it is an executive position and remain compliant." It's not compliant with the Xfinity contract, it's compliant with the SCTV contract with the town, the agreement with the town. Are there any other updates? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four to zero. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and we have William Ferango, he's requesting for a reappointment to the Saugus Library Board of Trustees. They're, these are three-year appointments and they end March 31st, so we can't go over three years, so this would be through March 31st, 2027.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I will make a motion that we reappoint William Ferango to the Saugus Library Board of Trustees effective immediately. This extension will run through March 31st, 2027.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience for our second citizens' comments tonight who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we're going to move on to members' motions. Selectman Riley, could you go first, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank everybody for all the things that did happen from Christmas and Christmas Eve and Hanukkah and everything to the town. Thank you to everybody that volunteered and got it done. I want to welcome our new Saugus resident, Leah James Lombardi, who was the first baby born in 2025, so congratulations to Jessica and Michael Lombardi, and I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy 2025 and just wish her good things.
That's interesting. We have an employee that was a firstborn baby in Saugus 29 years ago.
Who?
I don't want to, I don't want to give their name in case they don't want to know, but we have an employee that was the first baby of 29 years ago, whatever that is.
29 years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cardliano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to wish my board members and the public a happy new year.
Thank you, Selectman Cardliano. Second advice, Chair Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, just a quick thank you, Mr. Manager, to you and your team for rapid responses to requests for items to be addressed, and kudos over to the DPW folks for getting things done, some trees that were down and during the storm when we had snow and ice, I think they did a fantastic job making sure the hills were salted. I called you on a couple of locations and they jumped right on it. So I appreciate the timeliness. I know we didn't have all the plows in, we had our guys on the DPW running, but they did a great job salting and kept ahead of it, so just pass along kudos for that.
I'm sure they'll be thrilled with that, I appreciate that for them, and, you know, I say this every year and I just try to, hopefully it sinks in, when we have snowstorms that you think you're getting two inches, those snowstorms that are between two and four inches are the toughest to manage because the salt usually will melt two, a couple of the inches, and so you save on the, you know, getting the plows out and you don't have to get them out there, but if it goes and turns and it turns into a couple more inches, it becomes messy and then it's hot, and then they gotta, you know, maybe get contractors in or put plows on and then, you know, and if it freezes and gets cold at night, it's even worse. So those are worse than getting 12 inches of snow, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And I don't think people realize that, yeah.
A lot of people had positive comments, I mean, there's always a few naysayers, but there was a lot of positive comments about people coming from other communities into Saugus and noticing the difference.
Well, believe it or not, our roadways, you know, paving-wise and the snow and ice events that the DPW handles, I think are, and I do drive in other communities, I think we do a much better job. I mean, I know we're not perfect and there's people that have issues with their streets and we're trying to do the best we can do by comparative to other communities. I think you just saw in the news, Linfield, they tried to pass an override for a library and a thing, it didn't pass, you know, for, you know, 10-year thing with their roadways because their roadways are in tough shape there.
Yep.
You know, we've done, we've chipped them away, we do some extra appropriations to try to do other roadways in addition, so, you know, nothing's, you know, perfect, but we're chipping it away and I think the DPW and the town, we appreciate your compliments.
And my last item, same as my fellow board members, I wish all my fellow board members, Mr. Manager, Meredith, those in the audience and those at home, a happy, healthy 2025. It's already off to a good start, so.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Riley.
Before your closing comments, I just wanted to make a motion to take Continental off the table.
And that's seconded by the chair. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four to zero. Perhaps, Meredith, you can reach out to them to see whether they can, I don't know what happened this evening, they probably got busy with something, but perhaps we can have them come to our next meeting. Thank you for doing that. Thank you. I want to thank the administration, DPW, police, fire, everybody involved with the wonderful Christmas lighting that we had in Saugus, the Christmas Eve parade and the menorah lighting. So thank you all for pulling these three big events off in Saugus. It was wonderful and people had a great time and really appreciated everything that the town has done. I think we live in a wonderful town and we really care about everyone, I feel. Speaking of caring for everyone, I just want to thank my fellow board members, I want to thank my town manager and Meredith, the people here in Saugus for their kindness and awfulness with the passing of my mom, who passed last month. It's been very difficult for me and my family, and the outpouring of love will never go unnoticed, and it's so deeply appreciated, and I want to thank each and every one of you because there are no words when you lose your mother, it's horrible, it's been very difficult for me and my family, so, but I want to, I want to thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I want to thank our conus for being here this evening. Thank you, thank you very much. The board appreciates you being here and your presence. And lastly, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy new year. I see great things for our town and we're all working together, moving Saugus forward. So thank you all for everything you do and everything that you continue to do. With that said, would somebody please make.
So moved.
Seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cardliano's motion, to a adjourn, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four to zero. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.